At this time, I will call the Board of Supervisors meeting for December the 20th, 2013 to order. I'd like for everybody to please stand while Reverend Jeff Black of Providence Reform Presbyterian Church delivers our invocation and remains standing for the pledge. Reverend Black.
Great and holy God, we do come before you with thanksgiving acknowledging that you are the Creator, the Sustainer, and the Governor of all that exists. Therefore, we live in a universe of harmony of interests and not conflict of interests. We thank you, O Lord, for all of your gifts, including that of civil government. We pray that you would remind these men here this day that they serve as ministers of you to do good to the people under their jurisdiction. Give to them wisdom, discretion, restraint. Grant them the conviction it is never right to do evil in order that good may be accomplished. And our Father, we pray that they may indeed be a blessing to those of us who live in With County. Grant these things, we pray, in the precious name of your Son, Jesus Christ, Lord, Savior, Source of Law, Definer of Good. In his name we do pray. Amen.
... of the United States of America and to the Republic for which he stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, let me welcome everyone to the last Board of Supervisors meeting of 2013. The first order of business is citizens' time, and we have Ms. Linda Myers who'd like to speak. Ms. Myers, come forward, please. Thank you.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
I have some paperwork to hand out to you. There is a new land grab going on. The Virginia Department of Tourism and the -- and other non-related NGOs in the state are proposing a beaches, Bluegrass to Beaches Trail. Now, this sounds, might sound very good, however, it will involve, in the future, private property rights. And we're very concerned with continued private property rights in the state of Virginia. And we'd like the citizens, or I'm asking you on behalf of the citizens in With County, to help preserve our private property rights and contacting our delegates and our Virginia senators and ask them to refuse to participate in this Bluegrass to Beaches proposal. Last year, we averted the crooked road business, and this is another way of getting in the back door and messing up our private property rights. So if you'd look at that, it would be very important to get on that. Also, amongst us, the EPA in September has another proposal, and here's more information. This is also, you're all familiar with the Chesapeake business, the watershed. Well, now they're proposing that every stream, every well, every puddle in the United States also be under the jurisdiction of the EPA. And this is also an affront to our private property rights. So they're doing this survey now. We really need to contact the EPA and/or our senators and tell them we are not interested in their having control of all water resources in the United States. We here in With County just cannot deal with that. Thank you so much, gentlemen. Merry Christmas.
Thank you, and merry Christmas to you. I'm happy to hear. Let's go all the way. Next order of business is the minutes of the previous meeting, December the 10th, 2013. Just a second. Reverend Black, you didn't want to speak through any issue, did you? You signed it. No, sir. I didn't think so. Thank you, sir. Minutes of the previous meeting, December the 10th, 2013. Going to have a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the minutes as presented.
Is there a second? All right, the motion's been made in second. Now, are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? Seeing no, we'll call for the vote. Mr. Hall.
I'm going to stay since I was...
Okay.
Yes.
And I. I jumped the gun, gentlemen. Payment of the invoices.
I make a motion we pay the invoices as presented.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right. Is there any invoices members would like to bring up and discuss? Seeing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. Mr. Horne.
Aye.
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 And aye. Thank you. Seven zero. Old Business, and the first order of Old Business that we have are Rules of Procedure for 2014. Gentlemen, I assume you've read those. Is there anyone that would like to discuss those rules of procedure?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
... Board of Supervisors. One of the reasons you had this in the last agenda, I was, as we've been preparing, Mr. Wilson, you know, you're taking over your seat first of the year. There's also some training from the VACO. One of the things that we noticed difference, or I noticed difference in our rules of procedure in a lot of the counties in the state of Virginia was that a lot of counties do a rotational basis, which is not in ours, but I would just ask that maybe you all want to consider that as you got rules of procedure in the future, rotational or non-rotational. But that was part of, as we were looking at some of these things in Virginia, I understood a little bit of difference in there. There, y'all like the chairman of each area. So a lot of counties just do a rotation. Everybody has their opportunity, or everybody has their opportunity to not do it.
And...
And this will be in either on the first meeting in January when the board reorganizes.
Do you have any comments?
No, I mean, does it have to be, I mean, if we amend anything, does it have to be amended today?
No.
Okay.
That was just boot for thought.
Okay, because I also saw, yeah, that we haven't changed that about the citizens' time either.
No, we haven't.
So we'll do, okay. All right.
Gentlemen, any other comments at this time? Okay, we'll move by the rules of procedure, and good luck to you all in the future. Any other Old Business, Mr. Dalton?
Yes.
All right, we'll move to reports. And Sam? If you're not ready, Sam, I can help, you know, get...
Oh, it's a bit close.
Well, I mean, I can go, I'll start the bottom of this and give you some more time.
That's good. Little link with getting it ready this morning. On our consolidated account report, we had $48,312,000. As of yesterday, in the bank, we had $53,926.15. And our collections from our local taxes totaled $16,437,066, which makes it about 91 percent of our total budget. This time last year, we'd taken in a little less money, but our percentage was up. Last year, we took in $16,395, and our percentage was at 97 percent last year. Where we raised the rates and stuff, I guess. But overall, the personal property, which I was worried about, it's, we're at 85 percent on that, and that was a concern as to what people are going to do about stickers and paying their personal property. But it came in a little better than I thought it was going to so far.
Is it about average then?
Of course, we always, we always have that bunch that we have to do warrants and stuff for, whatever we've got to do to collect it. We always have that bunch. But overall, it's coming in pretty good, which I'm glad to say, you know, with the economy and stuff like it is.
Any questions for Sam?
Thanks, sir.
Have a merry Christmas and a happy...
Merry Christmas, sir.
All right. Hey, do you have anything not on the agenda? Do you have any report?
Just merry Christmas to all of you.
All right, well, thank you. Sheriff? Chief Deputy Dunn?
Sheriff apologizes for not being here this morning, but he had a death in the family, and he is out of town at a funeral. But he did have a few things he wanted me to bring to the board's attention. We had, we're trying to convert over from the Berettas to the Glock sidearms, and we, as we do so, we're trying to get the most money out of the old Berettas that we can. We were offered $149 in trade-ins, and through using auctions, we have been able to sell eight of them at about $178 apiece, so that turned out pretty good for us. Also, we have, I gave the chairman a press release from the Attorney General's office that Virginia was the lead agency in a pharmaceutical investigation involving a pharmacy company in Virginia. And as a result of that, there was a large asset forfeiture of which Virginia received about $114 million, which was turned over to the Attorney General's office. He, in turn, made that available for some grants, and we applied for a grant and have been notified that we're going to receive $97,000 in order to purchase patrol rifles. And that would give us an opportunity to have one in each and every vehicle. It'll be equipped with modern optics and flashlights and slings, and it was part of the recommendation of the needs assessment from the With Land Foundation that we do that in case we need to respond to a school shooting or some kind of mass casualty event. And it looks like we'll be able to use that money to do that. I left you guys a copy of the trash collection so far, and as of, we didn't get to do it last week in because of the bad weather, but the weekend before, we did, and we're up to about 15 tons of trash since we started the trash program. Something you might notice on there, one of the first places we picked up was the south side of Exit 77, and the last place we picked up was south side of Exit 77. I believe the first time we picked it up, we picked up 58 bags of trash. Back four months later, picked up 63. So, and you'll see that all along the interstate, yes, I've got a feeling, as we go back and start picking up trash. We're not getting a lot of requests right now. We have a few requests for trash pickups, but we're open to any requests that you guys might send our way. And that's all I have, if y'all have any questions.
Was there something in the minutes that I'm reading, I mean, not in the agenda, about amending and appropriating insurance budget for several of the Berettas? Huh? It's in the consent count. Okay, I knew I read it, and that's why I was hustling through. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I have a question.
You have a question?
Has the sheriff or anyone contacted you about education program through the schools to let's start working to diminish the trash so we can gain on these repeat numbers?
The sheriff mentioned that to me last week, and he said that we need to explore some kind of program where we, and I think also what we need to do is probably not just in the schools, but the community, you know, at large, because, you know, those are problems. We're trying to think of a way to address them enforcement-wise, to pick up the enforcement of, but that's a, that's kind of, it'll be kind of a tedious job to just sit there, watch and watch and watch until somebody does it. Of course, the areas along the interstate, just about any kind of enforcement efforts we do along the interstate, you know, keeping, trying to keep people from selling drugs or prostitution at the truck stops, if you can just make a few arrests, word gets around really quickly, and that'll curb it for a few months. But you've got to keep those efforts up if you want it to stay. And I think trash collection's going to be the same way, but, you know, it's really ridiculous that people are discarding that amount of trash, you know, because most, if you look at the places where we picked up, a lot of that is right off the interstate.
Keith, do you think that, that we have an adequate trash ordinance or littering ordinance now that's enforceable?
I'd have to go back and look at it, to be honest with you. Most of the ones we've done, we've done on the state littering, and, you know, we might be able to do something with our ordinance that would, you know, make it easier to apply, easier for the guys to make a charge. That's something we'd have to sit down with you and Commonwealth Attorney and talk about the board, Commonwealth Attorney and us, and see what, something we think can be enforceable and something that would help curb, you know, the people just chunking their trash along our highways. Well, it's not just the highways either. We get a lot, everywhere we have a trash pickup place, coming and going on either side of them, where people are hauling their trash and it's falling off the trucks and things like that. And the judge won't convict on that. If we pick up a bag of trash and it's got, you know, Joe Hale's name, mail and stuff inside, he won't convict on that, you know?
So he wants somebody to visually see it being thrown out.
Right.
But if we have an ordinance crafted that would enforce, then your road deputies write a few tickets. I think we have a good model in how the panhandling has gone away.
Right.
You don't have that problem like you had it.
Right.
It still occurs occasionally. But if we did that in conjunction with an education program through the schools, scout troops, and any church that would be involved in presentation, somebody's got to take the lead to make this happen. Can you do that, or...
We could.
Working with...
I'm sure, you know, I'm sure the resources are out there somewhere that are, to give us some kind of educational program that we could do for groups like that, because we do talk to a lot of church groups, scout groups, civic organizations about various things, you know, drugs and scams and things like that. I don't see a reason why we couldn't incorporate something that involved littering as well.
If we just consider that littering is a social issue, and you've got to start with education to retrain and let the kids help with enforcement, I think that's something that needs our attention.
Well, when you start educating them at an early age, they know that as they get older, and, you know, it might not, it might not, we might not be able to reach out to everybody right now, but we can start that, and if we keep that effort up over the years, eventually, you know, all the kids that go through our school systems or all the kids that participate in scouts, they're going to, they'll hear it. But I'll, I'll look into that, and I'll see if I can find us a program that we can start doing.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Keith.
Keith, we have a system request this morning, a failure of association with Talon Corporate Limits, for its speaking, 20, for trash picking.
We, we're still getting the trash pickup crew from the regional jail that operates during the week, and we get two days a month of that. And I don't know how many times we've picked that stretch up, but it's going, it's like I said, it's leading to and going away from the, you know, the trash place. So, but we have, we have picked that thing up several times. I drove down this morning and needed it again.
Thank you. We'll move to Board of Supervisors reports. Mr. Hall, do you have anything?
Nothing at this time.
Mr. Hale?
Nothing at this time.
Mr. Hall?
No, sir.
No, sir.
No, sir.
This may be a first, okay. County Administrator, I see there are several things, County Administrator, starting with VACO vacancy, I believe.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first item on the report is a vacancy on the VACO Board of Directors for Region 12. It's a little miss, Mr. Hudsonson, Carol Canning, Lynn Carol Grayson, Grace Smith, Washington with, represented by the Board of Directors, replacing Mr. Hudsonson, who's now on the vice president of VACO. Smith has came out of the nomination, so it's due last year. We had a meeting, but we have someone on our board. Everybody need to attend that meeting to vote for that person.
What would that meeting be? Have they set a time? I didn't...
Haven't set a time, but I offered Carol Canning, since we're in the center, to have her on the board, whether that's the location they use or not, but Mr. Hudson has to call if I offer that Carol Canning Administrator to the question.
Well, I had the pleasure of serving on that board, and I would suggest to, if one of you would like to, you really get a comprehensive view of how legislation affects the whole state. And I think as a group, if the General Assembly got along as well as the VACO representatives, we solved a lot of problems. Doesn't always happen that way. So I would suggest to maybe one of you thinking about entering that race. Accounting software? Or is anybody else to make a comment on?
I think we're interested, we need to, obviously, 15 days on our last board meeting to nominate somebody who needs to be...
Now, today?
Today.
Anyone of you interested?
Can't get Tim at the day. If you're interested, we can make a note, or we're going to support one of the other counties.
Well, I do, I do serve on the VACO Steering Committee, environmental and agriculture. I'll be, I would be willing to serve on the, represent With County and the...
Other counties.
Other counties in southwest Virginia, in our region.
Anyone else? Then I would suggest that somebody nominate him for With County.
I would, I would nominate him, I mean...
All right. We need to do that here?
Is there an official act?
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Seeing no other nominations, let's move for our acclamation of Tim. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
I would nominate the other counties to support my neighbor in county.
Let me, I don't know how they'll do it this time, but historically, it's the number of people that are at the meeting. So it's not each county gets one vote. With County can send everybody. It would help get Tim elected. So I'm going to suggest to you that when that date comes around, it'd really be helpful, Solell, if you can get it here in With County. But if not, take a little day trip. Okay? All right, thank you. Next is accounting software. Mr. Dalton?
Mr. Chairman, the county's receiving proposals, accounting software. Mr. Crane is in his committee, Commissioner of Revenue, Treasurer, School Board, Administration Office. Currently, we don't have a member of the board. Mr. Reeves has indicated he would serve on that committee. I do know that was one of the judges of Board of Supervisors this year. Look at the, get us all integrated, see if it's better reports and more timeline. We present it, so if somebody in the board wants to be on that, we would welcome that person.
When is Bruce, when's your first meeting? Have you set a time yet?
We haven't set any, but we are in the process of evaluation.
I would suggest to you, until you get reorganized, that if you're any interested, you contact Solell and tell him you'd be interested in working with that committee.
How many proposals?
How many proposals?
I don't know.
Seven.
Seven. Okay. All right, next is the DJCCCA fiscal report for 2013, I assume? Or is that a grant that we spent most of the money or all of? I couldn't tell when I read it. Thirty-one thousand versus...
Actually, we spent very little. We have to write a check back for about $21,000 or so. We're in the process of doing that.
Okay.
State of the year, achieved with the DSS. Next item is a memo from you guys requesting permission or authorized to the Treasurer and County Administrator to provide a bonding, a bonding alternative that's required for VDOT to legally treat its extension, which is guaranteed, will allow VDOT to reimburse the candidate almost $1 million they owe us. Last item is put right in place.
Okay.
Typically, what we've done in the past, instead of paying, we agreed with CD Sam, callable VDOT's name on.
Yeah, that's what we're doing in the past.
And we've asked for permission from the board to set up that.
Okay, so we will need a motion.
I'll make that motion.
All right. Motion's been made. Supervisor Hausner, is there a second?
I'll second.
Does everyone understand the motion? Seeing that we do, we'll have a roll call vote. Mr. Hall?
Aye.
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 And aye. Seven zero. Thank you. Department of Social Services, financial statement?
This is a report prepared by each year and given to each vote by all the committees in the state, details how the expenditures, federal, state, and local dollars, are spent in Department of Social Services. Bottom line is $4 million spent offering funds each year.
Okay. Can we have a change order for the Treasurer's office?
We do. When we opened bids and thought, seeing the actual counters were not tall enough, Samuel wanted a higher level so that the labels could stay in the offset and not hit the weeds. This change order prevents that increasing those heights. I would request that that be approved.
Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Aye.
It's been moved in second that we change the order for the Treasurer's office. And Sam, I know I attended that building grounds meeting. Will that solve everything for you, you think, pretty good?
Oh, yes.
All right. Ready to vote? Mr. Horne?
Aye.
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 And aye. Thank you. The I-81 corridor coalition, coalition, excuse me?
They're requesting us to kind of member that. I think I would refer that to as a pledge of consideration for next year.
Well, I would suggest to the, that we do belong to that when you all reorganize and so forth, because that is our lifeblood here in southwest Virginia, and if any decisions are made about I-81, I think we ought to be a part of it. So it's a suggestion for you to think about in the future, gentlemen. The Appalachian Agriculture Exposition Center.
Mr. Chairman, the board that is evaluating Appalachian Ag Expo, the terms that came up, those to do an economic impact, this is the proposal, 11 percent. They've done dozens of these, they're signed. This is the proposal. Many wouldn't have thought it might cost as much as $35,000. This is a lot less. Actually, that will allow us enough money when this is finished, through the business plan, of how it will actually be operated after we see the impact. The impact shows enough positive things to the county, that the business plan can be implemented the same way that we originally talked about.
I'll make the motion that we accept this.
Okay. Been moved that we accept the Weldon Cooper's, Weldon Cooper, excuse me, Center's proposal or recommendations. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Been moved in second. Now, is there any discussion?
Is there a timeline on deliverable for that?
There's a, right here. There's a calendar. All right, thank you. It's on page 79.
Actually, gentlemen, what they told me on the telephone, they didn't expect us to act so quickly. They intended to start in March, that we would deliberate a little longer than one meeting, and I asked them that. So they will move through that schedule upward based on their signing of the contract immediately after the first review.
Thank you.
We're ready to vote. Okay. Mr. Hall?
Aye.
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 And aye. Thank you, seven zero. Next is Rural Trade Elementary School Resolution. Next is Rural Tree Elementary School Resolution?
Mr. Chairman, VDOT has approached this and has indicated that Rogue Rural Tree Elementary School was, even though they've been maintaining it, there's a roadside and Rogue Number One that was never properly brought into the system. Asked the board to adopt this resolution.
Mr. Chairman, I move we adopt the resolution.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
I wouldn't think there'd be any discussion, but is there any discussion on this? Since it is a resolution, we'll have to have a roll call vote. Mr. Honey?
Aye.
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 And aye. And I assume the same thing for Max Metis?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the resolution.
For Max Metis?
Yes.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Okay. Mr. Honey?
Aye.
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 And aye, thank you. Industrial incentives?
Mr. Chair, Chairman, the board, our enterprise zones, kind of like, is now, uh, Enterprise zones now have a whole different definition in some areas that would be important. We sent this back to state Virginia to get a five-year extension for the park and other areas. We need to look at the incentives, the areas, and part of the discussion is to include the interstate corridor and mixed beverages corridor. What that does is allow people that build a restaurant or has an existing building, they invest more than five hundred thousand or a million dollars that they can get Virginia tax credits. They can also get some capital improvement grants and job training grants through state Virginia. But I would ask that this be referred to the Economic Development Committee, so we can go through that and discuss what areas are most important, and we can get up to, throughout the county. About thirty-six hundred acres, and this, currently we have about fourteen hundred acres. I think it's a big benefit for marketing too. And quite frankly, although this is out, so it's no surprise that the two downtowns are doing some downtown revitalization. As part of this, we need to really look at, can part of those downtowns be included in the enterprise zone? So it's another incentives, so the downtowns can be brought back to life.
I know those of you that haven't been down that street, the old jail's gone now. It's completely, they're hauling it away, but it's completely down. These incentives, should we not involve, uh, the incentives that we had before? I mean, the question I have is, how many of these incentives that you list here do we already offer? Is there any?
Uh, some water deal. A billion permits, et cetera. We do offer some, but these are just ideas to look at the future of how better we can need to discuss. This, there may be, you guys may have some other ideas too.
Yeah.
These are just ideas that we need to discuss. Either they're good, they're bad. I mean, it's not have to do it or do it.
But these are generic incentives?
Yeah.
That they've come up with for enterprise zone?
They were brought out, the IDA lived through it throughout the state of Virginia, summarized and then won this. That's how this is going to impact. This is what everybody, some other people are doing and us, et cetera.
Okay.
All right.
Question?
Yes, sir.
It, it's time that you started negotiation with waste disposal contracts, is that correct?
It is.
I, I think that, that part of your negotiation and, uh, that debris is a big thing in school renovations. I'd like to propose that the county negotiate tip and fee be reduced or eliminated for debris that's generated on county property. And make some effort to get that reduced. Not private property, but public projects. And while that is on the table, maybe talk to that about actually saving money on debris disposal, if that's possible. I just got bit by what it costs to take stuff to a transfer station. It's pretty high.
With our refuse collection bid, actually, we have three members, board members that sit on the Joint Public Service Authority. And they set those rates on a annual basis, so I think those discussions. If you look at one, two, and the guy that's sleeping in the middle, they need to be aware of that, that they can bring it up in their PSA. Because that's how, it's really not tied to air. We pay a debris collection fee to transfer stations like everybody else in county. PSA is an independent organization that sets those fees, but I'm sure the three guys heard that. Et cetera. I'll ask to be, but I'm going to generate the document next week.
Thank you.
Now, whoever gets this bid has complete control of the convenience centers. Is that, that's the way we bid it in the past, right? So they would be liable for any accidents that are happening there?
Yes.
Okay.
We have, uh, well, the new bid has eight different options that we've been working on. We haven't put that up yet yet, because we haven't presented it to the budget committee. Colonel Lee, first meeting, January, the budget committee, who's, here's what we're going to do with the bid. But it's going to go pretty quickly because a new vendor comes on, he's going to take over July.
July one.
But, uh, we do require, under current bids, that a vendor out there has liability insurance worth on the vehicle. So if you have an accident there, you hit somebody, or they hit you, or reach over your vehicle.
My concern is seeing people stand up on the edge of a pickup throwing a bag up over there, and I figure if somebody ever slips, they could break a back or something of that nature, or have a concussion. I think when those, if those things get so full that they shut the door, they shouldn't be throwing it up over top like that. Somebody's going to get hurt. Waiting for the time to happen, and I hope it doesn't or never happens. But have you also seen that happen at any convenience center? You know what I'm talking about. Those high boxes, and they just crawl up on the trucks and throw them over.
Well, if I get in the back of my truck and then step up on the toolbox, a lot of times I can get it over there.
Well, Hausman, I hope you don't break your back, so.
So, Mr. Chairman, are you asking that we place a restriction in our bids that it can only be built in the back when the doors are?
That would be my suggestion, and you guys need to be thinking about that for liability problems. Because even though you may not think you're liable, when they start, lawyer starts suing, he never usually stops till he gets to the bottom of it.
Well, and, and I think it's fine except that also in the negotiations then, there's going to have to be clearly defined when they come and get those boxes.
Yeah, that would solve the problem, yeah.
Yeah, because to, you know, to say that you can only feel it from the front, once they shut that door and I pull up with, with a truckload of trash, and they say, oh, well, we're sorry, you'll have to take it back. That's not going to, to work very well.
If they shut the door, they need to pick it up and bring a empty one.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, when they get to the point that they shut the door, an empty one needs to be on the way.
Mr. Halehead coming.
I think that we have a, a good program here and good location of the transfer stations, but, and the convenience centers. But I hope PSA with this new contract would make an effort to encourage people to bring their trash and, and not be restrictive. Let's, let's get it to those places instead of it being dumped on the road, dumped in the national forest. Most folks dump stuff because they don't want to take it to where it's supposed to go. I think the more conducive to coming to the transfer stations, the better for the county overall. Restrictive makes them go dump it in the woods. The transfer station cost, which I realize there's got to be recovery of funds. We, we see a lot of shingles, especially getting dumped on roads from time to time and, and being dumped in the national forest or on secondary roads. Couple of roads in mind in eastern Emmett County that, that just seems to be, needs to be a concerted effort, I think, between the sheriff's department. Do we need a resolution for clearing and the acceptance concept that we want you to bring it to the transfer stations? Convenience centers.
I, I understand exactly what you're saying. Anybody else?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, Sam.
If I may?
Yes, please.
During the tax season, the decals, we're getting rid of them. That was the most asked question, is what are we going to do with our trash? People are very, very concerned about not having a decal or something where they can get the trash place and dump the trash. I told them at this point, I, I didn't know what we were going to do. We hadn't really made a decision.
Well, it seems.
That is something that people are very concerned about.
To me, that we're going to open it up and let them dump their trash, because if they're going to have it, like Mr. Halehead, I would rather for them to put it at a convenience center than throw it out on the road.
I agree, but yeah, I would just like, you know, that is a concern around the county, is that people are afraid we're going to do away with our trash centers. Or worried about it.
I think what you're, you're going to see, and I, I can't speak for these gentlemen, you're going to see a relax, of the roles. And you're going to relax a little bit for the simple reason of what we said before. Put it at a convenience center rather than throwing it out on the road.
That's your right, thank you.
I think that's the point you were making.
Yeah, and hopefully, constitutional officers will help spread that word as these people come in with concerns. Say just what I said, we want them to bring it there. How we work it out is a staff thing with the negotiations, but the intent is to get people to bring it to the convenience centers. And I don't see any confusion about that. It seems like to me it's very straightforward.
Mr. Chairman?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. I have, a lot of people ask me, Sam, like you have, about other people from other counties bringing trash to the convenience centers that's along the county borders. Like the rest of, we'd rather see people, you know, put their trash in there. But what I've told people, and I think the board will agree with me, if there's a real big influx of trash coming in, then we may have to look at issuing a permanent decal or something, sticker to the county citizens, if that becomes a problem.
That was few last county, it's not.
If, if it don't become a problem, you know, we, you know, I'm like everybody else, rather see the trash in the dumpsters than, you know, on the side of the road somewhere. And, you know, if it becomes a problem that the dumpsters are getting for, a lot of people from other counties are bringing trash into the convenience center, then I think we'll have to look at that.
Okay. All right. I think the next thing is the Forest Service Appalachian. Now, I'll see what my agenda.
Yes, the relocation of a short portion of the AT trade, these nasty heavy columns, about two miles and a half. Trying to make a better grade on that poor impact of the forest.
Did you remember, have a comment?
I'm looking at the map. I, it's hard to distinguish from that map, to me, whether they're changing anything, but, uh, I mean, this is just information for us and an opportunity to make comments, isn't it?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Next is the Virginia DLP Retirement Ben, Sick Leaf Benefits, Salal?
We've, we've had our meetings, and as everyone knows, the state of Virginia is implementing new Virginia retirement system law. That we have, starting January the first, all new employees are on a hybrid plan. Means that they will be provided with short-term and long-term disability program. And as part of that, currently, what we have is a sick leave program. And we will be quite frankly, making the right personnel policy to indicate the new procedures for these new hybrid people, you know, as they can go on out on short-term disability. After a week, they don't need to leave that. And long-term disability, with some of the older employees that don't have short-term, long-term disability program, if you're going for soon. They currently allow one hundred and eighty days of leave time to be accrued. If you're out for six or nine months, you're still, you employees, since they already have their, under the, uh, short-term, long-term disability, will get their pay for that. We will need to revise our personnel policy to recruit, believe, how much they earn in the year. And I request that this, now that you've turned it over to the Personnel Committee.
Okay, I will just do that. New Personnel Committee of two thousand fourteen. Austinville Water Treatment Plant Incident. You want to speak to that?
Uh, yes, sir. December the seventh, all of us were, staff were called out on Saturday. In Austinville, a private home that had fuel delivered, bottom of their tank leaked, we ended up with a truckload of kerosene in the sewer plant. And over, we identified the location, we had called in a cleanup unit. Currently, we're going back a few times, it's remediated. There will be claims made against the private landowner, for the universes for all those builds. Probably be a fairly significant amount of money. But we've been in contact with everybody, that understands the problems we have, that, that I would recommend. Waste water operator, when he got to the scene, reported it, made it, and the staff was there. Within an hour, I was there, within two hours, or so. For some reason, I was in an office on Saturday. I think it was just one of those instances that proved to me how reliable and good our staff is and our team is going to be.
All right, Mr. Dalton, you have anything else to report?
I do not, sir.
Okay. County Attorney?
I don't have anything important this time. I have to leave here, if you have to go to the hearing, so I'll be stepping out with a contract.
I'll tell you what we're going to do. We're going to take about a five-minute recess, let you sneak away, nobody notice it.
All right.
And the first order of business, of the new business, is the consent calendar. And I have a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'm making a motion that we approve the consent calendar.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Been moved in seconded. Any have, have any comments concerning anything on the consent calendar? Seeing none, we will, uh, call for the vote. Mr. Hall?
Aye.
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 And aye. Consent calendar has been passed.
And, Mr. Chairman, I would request that we move item B to the end of the, uh, to the end of the meeting.
That'll work for me. That'll work for me. Yes, sir, thank you. With County Rescue Squad.
That is a, a request that we've had that we've talked to J.D. about a little bit. They have asked about $9,279.75 for a down payment on workman's compensation. What we are going to do is look at the amount of gas and, and, you know, vehicle charges that they've used during the time that they've been covering for lead mines and reimburse, excuse me, them for that out of, out of that allotment, which will, which will help them pay for this, this down payment.
Okay. There's really no action, we need to talk about that.
No, sir.
Okay. Next thing on the agenda is appointments for 2014. Mr. Dalton, you want to speak to the appointments that they need to make next time?
Yes, sir. We've put this list in every year. I guess since we've had our last meeting, once our special meeting, all the appointments will expire on December 34th. For those that want to be reappointed or not be reappointed or serve on some of these committees, y'all need to talk about that, be prepared. There are a group of committees and organizations that Mr. McDaniel serves on that will become vacant at the end of the year. From the JPSA to Community Policy Management Team to the Library Board-
Mount Rogers?
Mount Rogers, et cetera, A Corridor. So as you look through this, you need to decide if that's what you really want to be on or if you'd like to be serving on some of these other committees. Need to make those intentions and be prepared to discuss that at the first meeting in January. There is one thing, and hopefully we can take care of this today, is we, we do have some issues that, the January meeting is January the 14th. We've got some issues we need to meet and get some directions from the board before the appointments are made and whether these appointments minus Mr. McDaniel can just move on into next year till the first meeting, the reappointments are made. Just need a little direction from you because we've got an Economic Development Committee meeting, we need to talk about enterprise zones, we've got a Building and Grounds Committee meeting to move on several subjects, and a Fire and Rescue Committee meeting. So whether those committees can just carry on minus Mr. McDaniel till the 14th.
Will, will that take a motion, Mr. Chairman?
I think you should.
Well, I'll, I'll make the motion that, that all the committees stay intact until after the, the first Board Supervisors meeting in, in January 2014.
Minus the chair?
Minus the chair, yeah. She won't come back.
That's why I said-
Minus the chair, okay.
I'll second that motion.
Any more discussion? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Is that it, Mr. Dalton?
We have one other appointment that can be taken care of, Miss McDaniel's App sure is an appointment, Mount Rogers-
Yeah, that was in the-
Community Service Board. She is eligible for a reappointment according to their rules and our rules. According to this letter, she's done a good job with it.
I think she was recommended by Lisa Moore.
Is she willing to serve another term?
Yes.
I move we reappoint her.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other nominations? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Is that it?
Bring us down to the-
Well, Mr. Halston, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Is other, are you asking if there's any other business?
Yeah.
Ms. Meyer's noted to me just a moment ago, and I've noticed this, and Joe Hale's brought it up 100 times. Maybe Joe needs to be our representative to talk to VDOT about this. The way VDOT grades roads and makes the road the ditch instead of cutting the ditches, I think the board needs to speak to them about grading roads properly, the dirt roads on the maintenance side of it. Joe grades Miller's Creek Road for them. Maybe he can give them a lesson on how to cut a ditch out to get it out of the road. But I've noticed that in a couple of the rains lately, that if you head down a dirt road, the water's in the road and there's no ditch. We just need to make an effort, talk to VDOT to get their motor grader operators to actually do what they're supposed to be on maintenance of roads.
You know, based on that, there's a term in grading called flat blading, and if, if a rabbit can run under your blade when you're going up the road working it, it's not doing a lot of good to the road, but-
It's getting the house spots.
Yeah. The progress over the last 15 or 20 years is not to pull ditches. And I don't think that's EPA generated. I think it's that a lot of these roads have a time that regardless of the condition of the road, they say run out there and smooth it up. And the flat blading is they just go up, don't pull the ditches, they put gravel in the pothole, two days later that pothole is back. In all of Wiss County, we don't have a roller. They, if, if VDOT had the time to do the roads right, they wouldn't have to do them as often. Solil mentioned, I'd like for the record, there's no reimbursement to citizens for fixing gravel roads. But if your car is getting tore up, the cost of a vehicle, and I know you live in town and you don't know this, but people that-
Go ahead.
People that drive on a, a road, their vehicle will not last as long. It's ball joints, suspension, drivelines, grime. And I think if there's some way to influence the maintenance folks and to say a bit on the current administrator in our area, he has less than 10 people to maintain 700 road miles, lane miles. That's, that's ridiculous with the-
Chair.
If a motor grader breaks down, it has to go to Bristol to be fixed. That's an administrative thing that they do. If that motor grader's gone, there's no replacement in Wiss County while it's in Wissville for a week or two or four being repaired. But if, you evidently know how they think and operate better than I do. Is there any influence the board can make to them?
Actually, maybe seven or eight years ago, we had a discussion with the resident engineer at that time, Mr. Goode, and they started pulling ditches for a period of time, but it's, it's fallen back. I think maybe that discussion needs to happen again.
You think this is, is this a Mr. Russell decision or is it local administrator decision? VDOT?
Which Mr. Russell, the Bristol Russell or the Wissville Russell?
There's Mike Russell that's over the whole thing and then-
Jeff Russell.
Jeff Russell's local.
Oh, the local guy.
Local guy, it's his decision.
Yeah, right. That's what I'm used to. Generally speaking, our secondary roads are in a bit better shape coming through an extremely wet season, but there's some trouble spots that are not in good shape. I don't know whether Board Supervisors has any influence to get them on these troubled roads more than the ones that are in good shape. It seems like to me that it ought to be response to as need instead of response by schedule.
Mr. Dalton, can we request Mr. Russell, Jeff Russell, to be at the January the 14th meeting?
Yes, sir.
And I think we can discuss it with him then.
Now, that's, that's the nighttime meeting?
Yes. Okay.
That's everything, I'm sorry.
I want to slip my mind there. The convenience center at Idaho, they have a new guy working there, and it's too many holes, hot hole stuff in there, you can say before you bring your truck in, before you even lose it. Get something done for it. I said something to Bill about it last week, but still haven't been anything done.
Okay. We'll get it addressed. I said we will get it addressed.
Well, Mr. Chairman, if I may, while we're talking about roads, we may need to look at the, at the road. It's, it's a county road this time that goes up to the water tower off Radio Drive. I had one gentleman tell me that it's still washing out and gravel's washing in his yard. And I had not had a chance to drive up there. Actually, I, we headed up there yesterday, but they had traffic stopped.
Actually, I've been up there. Mr. Vaughn's working on that issue-
Okay.
-with Mr. Chris. We, we understand the problem. I understand we're talking about a culvert or something to divert some of the water. And it requires a easement or permission from one of the properties.
One of the property owners?
Yes, sir.
One that we're likely to get?
Well, we've been working on it for a while, so I don't know how likely that's, is it happening or not. It may be that one of those issues that we say, we just do it and we'll see what the consequences are.
Okay.
But we have been, you know, you and I went up there a long time ago, and that's how long we've been working on that issue.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Dalton, out on Old Stage Road, are they fixing, you know, where they put the water line in? Are they fixing the banks back like they were before they put the water line in? Miss Fontaine Bank out there had mulch and, and stuff on it, but when they come in there and cut it down, they made, kind of made it straight up and down. Are they going to come back and, and put it back the way it was?
We should, contractor, if it's been noted that, and feel, we'll go out there this afternoon and look at it, but restoration is part of the contract. What I will say is that it's almost impossible to get it back to what people thought.
If they could just do something and just put mulch back on it, I mean, I think they'll replant the flowers and stuff.
I think part of the problem where he's talking about is, I think they've just got it so steep now where it used to be more at an angle. They just need it tapered off more.
And it hasn't been really, eyes out by the other, nothing done to that portion. I mean, it's still dirt.
We'll go today and we'll get something in. But we still, it's still in the warranty period, but we haven't any final acceptance yet?
I noticed they were out there working on certain areas of it, but they hadn't done anything to-
They have, they've been, we've had a lot of areas identified that needed restoration. And that may be one of them, we just, I just can't tell you at this moment. Mr. Vaughn might be able to answer the question, but we'll look into it and get you an answer and fixed if that's what it costs.
It's at Miss Fontaine's, it's right there at Williams Meat Packing Plant. It's the house right before you turn up Third Drive Way on the south side.
Speaking of the water line, I'm glad the hydrants are working. I don't know how many thousands of gallons we used out of them last night, but-
You scared me, Gina. I thought you were going to say all the water that went through the Speedway Elementary School yesterday.
No. No, I still haven't figured out exactly what happened there. I was, I was given a phone call and told that I needed to come out there and turn the hydrant 90 degrees. And I was trying to figure out how I was going to turn a hydrant 90 degrees.
We can do that.
Yeah, but somebody might, but Gina ain't.
There's eight bolts and two grooves. We'll do that. But anyway, we had a, turned the water on at Speedway yesterday on the new system and the Speedway Elementary School undoubtedly didn't have a pressure reducing valve, so all the hot water heaters popped off and there was water everywhere. And I heard this, my report I got back was Mr. Horny was called and to come out to fix it.
Like I said, they called and told me that the hydrant needed to be turned 90 degrees. When I got out there, they said, we've already got everything fixed. And I said, good deal.
Just another day, exciting day.
But we, Speedway had a fire last night and we actually used the fire hydrant there at the four-way.
That's good.
It worked good.
They are finished.
Mr. Halston, can I-
Oh, okay.
...tell you something on the agenda?
Yeah. Mr. McDaniel, since this is your last official meeting with us, I know that we're going to, you know, see you in, in, in just a little bit, but the Board Supervisors have put together a resolution for you, and I'd like to, to read that at this time. With County Resolution 2013-18 Honoring Danny C. McDaniel. Whereas Danny C. McDaniel was elected on November the 4th, 1997 by the citizens of Wiss County as their East Wissville representative on the Wiss County Board of Supervisors and began serving on January the 1st, 1998. And whereas Danny C. McDaniel served as a dedicated member of the Board of Supervisors for four consecutive four-year terms, ending on December the 31st, 2013, and whereas his leadership and devotion to his work led his fellow members of the Wiss County Board of Supervisors to name him chairman in 2001, 2002, 2012, and 2013. And whereas he devoted countless hours to Wiss County, serving as a member of various committees and boards, and most recently, serving on the following: the Region 13 Representative to the Board of Directors of the Virginia Association of Counties, Wiss County Building and Grounds Committee, Wiss County Community Policy and Management Team, Crossroads Regional Industrial Facility Authority, Economic Development Committee, Wiss Land Joint Public Service Authority, Mount Rogers Planning District Commission, Wiss County Planning Commission, Personnel Committee, Social Services Board, Town County Committee, Virginia A Corridor, Law of Honor Committee, Wiss County Budget Committee, Wiss County Water and Wastewater Committee, Wiss Grayson Regional Library Board, as well as many others during his tenure on the Board of Supervisors. And whereas his support, devotion, and love of Wiss County assisted in the following: purchase and development of Progress Park, a 1,210-acre super industrial site to include grading of sites with the largest being 165-plus acre flat area for a future advanced manufacturing facility; the creation and implementation of the New River Regional Water Authority to include a 20-inch water main from Austinville to Wissville; a water main connection between Wissville and Royal Retreat; a water main connecting Wissville to Speedway; a water main connecting Wiss County and Carroll County; the creation of the first two regional industrial facility authorities in Virginia; development of three crossroad regional international, excuse me, industrial facility authorities, projects with the town of Wissville and Brand County; creation of a 1,000, of over 1,000 high-paying jobs due to the support for expansion of existing industries, including Clotner and Royal Retreat and others; the location of new industries such as Gatorade, Amcor, Lane Industries, Wissville Technologies, Coalfield Services Incorporated, Brewer Automotive Company, and Asami Car and Equipment in Progress Park; funding of new school construction at Royal Retreat Elementary School, Fort Chiswell Middle School, Royal Retreat Agricultural Center, renovations and new construction at the Royal Retreat Middle School, Royal Retreat High School, Jackson Elementary School, Spiller Elementary School, Max Metta's Elementary School, Scott Middle Memorial Middle School, Sheffy Elementary School, Georgewith High School, and Fort Chiswell High School; improvements to Royal Retreat Lake Cape ground; the implementation of the Consolidated Emergency Operations Center in 2013; the expansion of the Fort Chiswell wastewater treatment point to include a large diameter gravity sewer to Progress Park and collection lines along the Interstate 81 corridor from exit 77 to exit 86. Seventy-Seven to Exit Eighty-Six; supported the expanding county water system, which grew from several hundred to three thousand customers, and the proposed water project to Baron Springs; the construction of Speedway, Baron Springs, and Fort Chiswell Fire and EMS stations, and providing new trucks and equipment to all county fire and rescue departments. Now, therefore be it resolved that the With County Board of Supervisors assembled in regular session this twentieth day of December twenty thirteen, does hereby express its heartfelt appreciation to Danny C. McDaniel for his time and service to the citizens of With County, and does hereby wish him and his family well in the future, and be it further resolved that this resolution be entered into the official minutes of the With County Board of Supervisors. Signed, Gary M. Housman, Vice Chairman. I thought it was gonna take me another four years to read. I would entertain a motion to accept this resolution and present it to Mr. McDaniel.
I'll make that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Danny, can we thank him?
Thank you very much.
And I told him that the only thing that didn't include here was all the times he voted the wrong way.
Thank you.
Danny?
One quick, little question.
Wait a minute, I have one more thing.
Oh, okay.
And on behalf of us on the board, we know that you enjoy your golf.
I enjoy it very much.
And we'd like to present you with a gift certificate from the Withville Golf Club.
Oh, thank you.
In appreciation for working with us. Thank you.
Nineteen eighty, ninety-seven seemed like a long time ago, and I certainly didn't realize how stupid I was till I got on this board and found out what went on. But I ran as probably a one or two-issue person, but I got the counting the other night, it would've been eighteen people I've served with. And I can honestly say that every one of them, I felt like when I left, including the rest of you guys, but I didn't count you in the eighteen, were my friends. And I appreciated every one of them, and I think nobody could say that we didn't leave on a good term, so hopefully, I'm doing the same thing. And I wish you all best in two thousand fourteen. I think you're heading in the right direction for this county, I really do. And we've accomplished a lot of things, but y'all are just at the foothills. The mountain's still out there. Thank you. And now, I'm looking forward to saying this, we are adjourned for two thousand thirteen.